Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Turner. Fire Robyn. Here. Hutton.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government really truly is appreciated. We're thankful that you're here. Thanks for taking time out of your, your lives and your business schedules to be here. There are a number of opportunities tonight to speak on matters of city business. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter the council chamber for those individuals desiring to address city council during the appearance of citizens section of our agenda, and I'll also ask if anyone wants to speak then. I'd like to ask our fire chief, Chief Carrier, to lead us in prayer, as well as our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let's pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, as we come before you tonight, we do thank you for all the many blessings that you've poured out upon us. We thank you, Lord, for Jesus Christ and the sacrifice he made for us. We thank you, Lord, for the beautiful day that you've given us and for the opportunity to live and work in a great place, the city of Bristol. We thank you, Lord, for these councilmen and women that are here before us tonight, and we thank you, Lord, for their dedication to serve in the community. And it would be our prayer tonight, Lord, that you would just give them your wisdom, give them your discernment as they make decisions on the items on the agenda. Pray, Lord, you would lead them in those decisions. And we pray, Lord, all this in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Burchewaugh, do you have any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
I do not.
Great. We have one proclamation and one recognition on tonight's agenda. The first proclamation is a proclamation designated June as National Home Ownership Month. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Margaret Fire Robin to read the proclamation. Mr. Steve Willinger, a member of the Community Development Advisory Committee, is in attendance to accept this proclamation.
Great. Whereas June 2023 make, marks the twentieth anniversary of the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD, including the Federal Housing Administration FHA, commitment and central role in providing accessible, affordable, and equitable homeownership opportunities to Americans nationwide. And whereas throughout our nation's history, homeownership has been central to the American way of life and plays a critical role in strengthening families and communities. And for these, those reasons, our nation has long promoted homeownership. And whereas since America's earliest days, homeownership has been creating community stakeholders who are active in charities and their places of worship and more likely to vote and become involved in local issues. Moreover, homeownership offers children a stable living environment and influences their development in measurable ways. Children of homeowners have higher students' test scores, a higher rate of high school graduation, thereby earn higher earning potential, and they're more likely to participate in organized activities. Quite simply, our nation is made stronger by the hardworking families and individuals who participate in the American dream of home, homeownership. And whereas the federal government and the state of Tennessee are working aggressively to make homeownership more affordable and more accessible and to ensure the dream of homeownership is available to all Americans. The city of Bristol, Tennessee, joins with the federal and state government in this mission. Now, therefore, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim June 2023 as National Home Ownership Month, the sixth day of June 2023. Thank you.
Mr. Willinger, would you join Ms. Fire Robin?
Good evening. Thank you. Thank, thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager. Well, hey, I have this. Throughout our nation's history, homeownership has been central to the American way of life. Homeownership plays a critical role in strengthening families and communities. And for those reasons, our nation has long promoted homeownership. On behalf of the Community Development Advisory Council, we appreciate the city leadership acknowledging June is National Home Ownership Month, and we celebrate those purchasing a home here in our great city. I am a Realtor, and I'll tell you what, this is a great place to live, and these folks come here. But most of all, one of the most exciting things any of us can experience is that first opportunity to have and own a home. And I love that part of it. Thank, thank you, city of Bristol.
We have one item of recognition on our agenda this evening. The city has over three hundred full, three hundred and fifty full and part-time employees that serve our community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First Program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our first recipient of the Bristol First Award. Mr. John Luttrell, Director of Community Relations, is present to give us a brief overview of this program and announce our Bristol First Award winner. John?
Actually, it's gonna be me.
Oh, it's gonna be you.
Yes, thank you. Bristol's transit system dates back several decades, and since its inception, has been a source of safe, reliable, affordable transportation for many community members. Although it takes many people from various departments in the city to keep the buses on the road, the drivers themselves are, are the public face of the transit system, often becoming trusted friends to those who routinely use the buses to get a ride to the grocery store, retail shops, medical appointments, or work. One of those drivers, Mr. Shane Flick, is the recipient of tonight's award. If you get the chance to meet Shane, you probably won't ever forget him, and chances are, he won't forget you either. Warm and friendly, he takes an interest in others, and is a real delight to talk to. He began his career as a truck driver, then worked as a conductor for Norfolk Southern Railroad for a time, before joining the city as a transit driver in 2016. In addition to finding a job he loves in a city he loves, Shane found true love in the transit division. His wife, Angie, also drives a bus, but that's a story for another day. Shane is responsible for transporting passengers along the busy hospital pinnacle route aboard a bus that proudly declares Bristol is on the move. And although those who work in the municipal annex are used to seeing buses come and go from downtown center throughout the day, they always know when Shane is behind the wheel because he beeps the horn and waves as he passes by. Given his usual demeanor, planning director Sherith Young knew something was wrong on May 10th, when Shane rushed through the door of the city annex without his usual smile. She initially suspected that emergency involving a bus, a passenger, or maybe even another driver, until Shane announced that the building was on fire and urged everyone to quickly evacuate. He helped Sherith spread the word, making his way through the maze of offices to ensure everyone got out safely. Back at downtown center, one of Shane's coworkers explained that she also saw the smoke when she pulled her bus into the station, but before she had time to process what was happening or to react, Shane had already jumped from his bus and darted across the street. Firefighters responded and determined that an adhesive used during the installation of a new roof had ignited. The fire was extinguished by contractors working on the roof without damage to the building or injuries, but the smoke was so thick that it was visible several blocks away. By the time firefighters checked the building and cleared the scene, Shane was back on his bus and making another trek through the city. The Bristol First Award was created in 2014 to recognize city employees for exceptional service to the public and across departmental lines. Shane's actions on May 10th are an example of outstanding service in an emergency situation and indicative of his ongoing spirit of selfless service to others. Tonight, upon the nomination of city employees who work within the Yule Easy Municipal Annex, it's my pleasure to invite transit driver Shane Flick to come forward to accept the Bristol First Award. Okay. You can say whatever you want. Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thanks. I just always look out for things, no matter where. And I felt like I had a job to do when I seen the building on fire, so I'd done what I had to do.
Thank you. We'll get a call in with you and the vice mayor if you don't want to hear your word.
The next item on our agenda are presentations, and we have no presentations, so we'll move right on to the Board of Education Liaison Report. Dr. Tudor, will you come share with us about our school system?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few things for you this evening. We finished the school year. I think we had a great school year, and we are now knee deep in summer school. We started actually yesterday. We have over four hundred students district-wide attending summer school, so pretty successful turnout so far. Hopefully, they'll stay with us. As you might have heard, third grade data from our ELAT caps came out. We had fifty point seven percent of our students who passed that assessment, which is about a ten percent increase over last year for us, so that's a success, in my opinion. We did have, that equates to about a hundred and thirty-four students who failed that according to Tennessee standards. There are some exemptions that qualify, so of those that were exempted from the criteria for the state, we have seventy-one who are not exempt. So those students are the ones that we've targeted for summer school. I think we have sixty-five or sixty-six of those who actually attended yesterday and today, so we're still trying to recruit the other students. But obviously, our focus is on making sure that we do all we can to provide interventions so that they are promoted to fourth grade. The other, other things I'd like to say is congratulations to our girls' track team, who ended up runners-up at the state level. We also had four of our ladies who won a state championship in one of their individual events, and we had another, I think, I can't remember what it was, fifteen top eight finishes, boys and girls combined. So great showing by our track team, and our baseball team, and our, we had an individual tennis player also made it to state level, although they didn't make it quite as far. So we had some great showings with athletics. Do you all have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a public hearing on tonight's agenda for the annexation plan of services for Fox Meadows. The public hearing is hereby open for the annexation plan of services. One year report, Ms. Sherith Young, Community Development Director, will summarize this matter for us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hutton, and good evening, council members. It's hard to believe it's been a year since the annexation for the twenty-two acre portion of Fox Meadows was approved last June 7th, 2022. As part of the annexation process, the city approved, the city council approved, a plan of services to determine how city services would be provided to the newly annexed property. Everything was really available and present on the day of the annexation, with the exception of the sanitary sewer service, which was required or is required to be extended to the newly annexed area. The plan of services stated that the developer was responsible for that activity, and the activity is well underway now. If you all have driven down there lately, there's a lot of dirt moving at the Fox Meadows site. So tonight is the portion of the annexation process, the one-year report, to close out the annexation process to meet TCA requirements. So we did a six-month report six months ago, and tonight we're doing the one-year report, just to report on this plan of services. We did advertise this properly as required in the Bristol Herald Courier on May 10th, 2023. So I do have a map here that just shows this annexed area, and then the plan of services is included in your packet. That just details all those services that were available immediately, and then the line that explains the sanitary sewer service extension, that's the responsibility of the developer. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, this public hearing, you have a question?
When is, we know the scope of what's being done, the sequencing, when are they projecting to have certificates of occupancy for any or all of these homes?
So the developer has indicated that the final plats will be moved into the Planning Commission in July. At this time, that's what his plan is. After the final plat is approved, they could begin pulling building permits, and I believe it takes about four months for them to have a house from permit to completion. So depending on the timeline for the builder, you could see something really very soon, once those final plats are approved.
And are they gonna build, is their intention to build just a certain portion of the homes at one time? What is their, what is their plan of development?
So they're starting with phase four first. That's the first phase they'll be developing. Their indication is they'll be pulling permits or pulling sections in about twenty-five homes at a time, so it'll be twenty-five, 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 until they reach their final phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from council? All right. So seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Moved now to the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to the matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time. In most cases, neither the city council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. City manager will look into the matter, report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select the spokesperson to represent them. I've been handed a list of individuals. I'll call you up to the podium if you'll give your name and your address. That'd be, that'd be fantastic. So the first person on our list here is Anthony Milhorne.
Well, I just want to say good evening to everybody here. Ms. City Manager, Ms. Kelly Borgerost, did I get that right?
Close.
Thank you. Ms. Fire Robin, Mr. Luttrell, Vice Mayor Hutton, Councilwoman Leah Powers. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a minute about a matter I wanted to bring before the council. I live, I reside at 2312 Bay Street, and as you all know, the old Rosemont School Building is up on the hill right across from my front yard, and it's getting to be a pretty dilapidated structure, a lot of vandalism, that kind of thing going on. And I would like to see something done with it, rather than wrecking balls get it. It's a historic building, needs to be preserved. My wife went to school there as a child. I'd just like to see the, it turn into maybe apartments or something. You know, do something with it. So, you know, let it go the wrecking ball. That's all I had to say. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next on our list here is George Link.
George Link, 307 Rutledge Street, Bristol, Tennessee. Y'all are more than well aware who I am and what I'm representing here. In regards to the upcoming budget and all the new items, we are really excited about the prospect of going through the process of the RFQ and design phases here for skate park. We're gonna continue to do our due diligence on the private grant. We're gonna do our own fundraising in good faith. A, a community that has historically been underserved here, it for once feels served and heard. The number of messages I've received today from people going, "I wish I could be there, but I have to work," is astonishing. I've also been contacted by a person who's leading up in Clinch Cove, their movement to get a skate park in Clinch Cove, and then this afternoon, I just received a message over Instagram, somebody's leading up a movement in Moorestown. People from around the region are looking to the people of Bristol, the skate moms, the skate dads, the skaters, and what we're doing and how we're doing things. It isn't all us, though. It, it is very much having a receptive council that's willing to show up to our meetings and talk and support us, and the man with the most magnificent beard on the planet, Terry Nager, just putting up with minor autism on this project. Over the last year, we went from being a lucid group to riding the parade, to helping kids in need over Christmas, to hosting events, partnering with businesses. We, we're excited for what's coming, and we support you. And if you need any help from us to help progress this, we're gonna continue to do our part financially to the best of our abilities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list here is John Pollink. Okay. All right. Next on our list is Everett Larson. Everett, you do not need to put, to give us your address, or you can just tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Everett Larson, and I'm here to talk about the new skate park in Bristol. I'm twelve years old, and I'm here to ask that you vote yes to fund a skate, a new skate park. I ride a scooter, and right now I have to travel to Kingsport for a good skate park. We need a place to get outside, make friends, and learn new skills in a safe environment. I look forward to having an awesome skate park in Bristol. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes.
Thanks, Everett. You did awesome. That was fantastic. Awesome. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would miss the opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Is there anyone? Sure. Just, absolutely. Step to the podium, give us your name and address.
My name is Keryn Hernandez. I am a resident of Virginia. My address is 1418 New Hampshire Avenue. I do a lot of work on the Tennessee area, so that's kind of where I frequent. I lay my head in Virginia, but I work in Bristol, Tennessee. And during this whole process, upon meeting George and just seeing what he's trying to do with the park, skateboarding was a huge part of my life growing up. I grew up in Kent, Washington, and I grew up on a street called 240th, and it's kind of more of a, well, was a prioritized community. And they built a park, a skate park, and that was kind of a real game changer for our community, because there was no outlet for the youth who couldn't afford to get into, say, like a club sport or what have you. It was like a good outlet for us to learn, you know, different social skills, how to, you know, deal with the stresses of, you know, whatever it may be, whether it be your home life, whether it be, you know, school, whatever. It was a good outlet. It was a good way to, you know, socialize with other people that you may not even know you had similar interests with. And I think it would be very beneficial for, you know, Bristol to have a really nice skate park and, you know, and be able to bring the community together. I've just been, in the year that I've kind of been, you know, working with George, he's definitely like, that man is a saint, you know. And, and it's just been awesome to see everybody come together, you know, and it's been a beautiful thing, and I think it would continue to keep going, you know, and I think it's gonna definitely get these kids out there, and like it did for us. When they, when they built that park, they were, they were hosting skate competitions, and, you know, and they had, you know, volunteers that would come and, and teach kids how to skate, you know, just like the basics and stuff like that. And I really do believe a lot of the people in the Skate Bristol group and community would definitely be inept to do such things, you know. I, I truly believe it would be a great thing for this community. I think it's gonna be new, exciting, fun, with all the things that are happening in, in the town. I think it would be nice just to have like a recreational park where these kids can ride bikes, scooters, rollerblades, skateboard, and I And I guess that's all I have to say right now. I didn't really write anything down, but I do appreciate you guys' time and attention, and that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to address counsel? Okay. Thank you very much. We have appointments on our, next on our agenda, but we have no appointments. So, we'll move on to ordinances, resolutions. We have four ordinances on tonight's agenda. The first ordinance that we're looking at on first reading, new ordinances, is ordinance 23-6. It's an ordinance to adopt a budget and appropriate funds for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. So, to adopt this appropriate funds for the fiscal year, Ms. Borchardt, will you please summarize the ordinance for us?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. In your packet, you have quite a bit of information on the draft fiscal year 24 budget. Our budget total for fiscal year 24 is proposed to be $146,706,252, which reflects a 7% increase. We are not proposing to cut any types of programs or change any programs with this budget. The municipal portion of the budget is $87,501,685, and that represents an increase overall of 8% from the fiscal year 2023 budget. Some major projects that we've got proposed for '24 is completion of our East Cedar Street reconstruction project, completion also of our fire station two, that's being under construction right now, the Bluff City Highway sidewalk construction project, our regional wastewater treatment plant modifications, the Shelby Street booster station upgrades, and the 11W area water distribution system improvements for the growth in the area of around exit 74. Just a note on those, those larger projects, they are multiple year projects, so they'll begin in '24 and progress into fiscal years '25 and even potentially '26. The budget does include an 8% pay increase for all city employees. This is carrying on with the, the market study that was done previously. And it includes key themes which are consistent from years past, our economic development, education, infrastructure, and public safety. And then finally, the school system is, their budget total is $59,204,567, and that's an increase of approximately 5.6%. The next slide just shows the breakdown of how those funds are split out. You do have the budget book that was distributed to you. I know our finance staff has a couple of extra copies. If people are interested, it is also online. I have to give a huge amount of credit and kudos to our finance staff and our administration staff. We hit this budget season late because I started in this position later than we typically would do during a budget year, and they have done incredible work to get us to this point. So, thank you to them, and thank you to Vice Mayor and council. We had a great work session and have had very good, deep discussions on this and budgets moving forward. So, I appreciate everyone's willingness to really have difficult discussions and move this forward in a great manner. I'm proud of the budget that we're presenting, and I look forward to moving this with the council.
Does any member of council have questions for staff?
City Manager Borchardt, would you please talk a little bit about the fact that we will have, are contemplating a bond issue for projects and what, what our sequencing of that will be moving forward if, because the projects are not necessarily in the budget per se? And I know everybody is anxious to understand how those projects will move forward.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Powers. So, the budget that's being proposed is showing a $5.4 million deficit that will be funded with fund balance. We have more than adequate fund balance. This has been planned for, it's due to a number of factors, including equipment and capital projects that are extending from previous years to future. We have discussed four large parks projects. So, the White Top Creek Park baseball project, the pickleball project, the skate park, and then also the Melrose Community Center projects. Those would be proposed to be bonded for. And those run bonding, we can do up to $10 million in bank qualified bonds per calendar year. Our budget runs fiscal year, so in calendar year 2023, we've discussed doing the White Top Creek Park baseball fields and the pickleball courts, and then planning and working so that bonding can occur in 2024, calendar year 2024, for the Melrose Community Center and the skate park.
And so that there's understanding with the skate park, and when we talk about moving potential bonding into 2024, it's important to note that that bonding can take place at any time in 2024. So, it could be bonded early in 2024.
Correct.
If, if that's a possibility.
Correct. And one more piece to that is, we are able to incur costs before the bond is issued and repay ourselves. And actually, there's, there's a resolution the council will act on later this evening that will provide for that as well. So, we are working with our bond advisor to, to make sure that we're planning the best way possible for both the taxpayers and to get those projects completed.
Are there any other questions, counsel? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-6, fiscal 2024 budget and appropriation ordinance, and to say thank you to our city manager and our finance department for putting together an exceptional plan for us to move forward.
Do you have a second?
Go ahead.
I'll second that, and ditto.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 23-6?
I'll just, again, ditto for, and thanks especially to our team that's been working on this. There's a lot of folks on that team, and all our department heads, and finance, and Mary Lee, and Danielle, and everyone who has worked really hard to stay on schedule, which we're required to do. So, and we know we're going to have a lot more discussion, and I'll also say, I got another call today about a swimming pool that, so anybody who's paying attention to that, that's on the table to be talking about, to be sure that we consider the needs in having a public pool in our community. So, that's part of, part of our discussions on our capital expenditures in the next couple of years. So, just want to be sure that people know that that's being talked about and encourage folks to let us know what they do support. So, thank you.
I'll just add one more thing. I mean, these items are, they're definitely, you know, quality of life items. You know, they're attractors for people wanting to move to the area. And for folks that's living here, you know, makes them want to stay. So, you know, they're quality of life items, and I think everyone's really going to enjoy them for a long time.
Anyone in the audience like to address counsel on ordinance 23-6? Okay. I believe we're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Next item is ordinance 23-7. It's an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds and budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Ms. Borchardt, will you please summarize this ordinance for us?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, counsel. This is ordinance 23-7. This is a housekeeping ordinance that you typically do annually. So, it's just revising the appropriations within each of our funds to accommodate for what's actually happened over the course of this last year. So, the revised appropriation would be the general fund at $31,829,010. The general purpose school fund, $46,239,147. The chapter 420 fund, $12,54,703. The school federal projects fund, $12,208,521. The school nutrition fund, $2,805,200. The school capital facilities fund is at $900,000. The solid waste fund, $2,388,513. The transportation grant fund, $1,250,699. The water works fund, $9,015,600. And the stormwater fund at $650,000. In addition to those, there are other transfers that are expected to exceed original appropriations, and those are to transfer to the transportation grant fund from the general fund at $295,131 to the capital equipment fund, again, from the general fund at $2,47,043, to the school capital facilities fund from general purpose school fund in the amount of $899,045, and to the general purpose school fund from the school federal projects fund in the amount of $368,112.
Any member of council have questions for staff? Okay, seeing none? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
I'm hoping to approve ordinance 23-7 as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any member of council like to discuss ordinance 23-7? Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none? I believe we're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-8 is our next item on our agenda, is to amend the zoning ordinance to change the uses permitted by right in the B3, M1, and M2 zones, and to make other changes to clarify the purpose of such zones. Ms. Jones, will you, Ms. Young, sorry, will you please summarize this ordinance for us?
Yes, sir. So, this ordinance presented to city council tonight is to further the actions of the Planning Commission and city council over the past year to edit and revise the B3, M1, and M2 districts. The summary of changes that are included in the proposed ordinance for you tonight is to remove some, remove a few uses from the B3 district, to amend specifically the manufacturing use entry included in the B3 zone, to add some, to add a couple of uses to the M1 district, to add one use to the M2 district, and then to revise the purpose statements for each industrial district. We went through these in a little bit of detail during the work session, so I'll try to be brief, but I do have a little screen here to just summarize each of these changes for you. So, within the B3 district, the following uses will be removed: cardboard box manufacturing, car washes, flammable liquid storage related to wholesale use, so the wholesale sale of flammable liquids would no longer be allowed in the B3 zone. Machine shops will be removed, and then milk distribution stations will all be removed from the B3 zone. This is the item that probably has had the most discussion with Planning Commission and the city council in the work session. Currently, the way that the manufacturing use entry is written in the B3 zone, it's a little bit problematic. The B3 zone allows the manufacturer of some articles to be sold on premises, but it states that the articles must be sold on premises and that such manufacturing is incidental to the retail business. It's been hard for staff to interpret what incidental means over the years without some more language to back that up. It also currently says that of use such as this would not have, would not employ more than five operators. Again, that term has been hard for staff to interpret, so the Planning Commission discussion was to move to a more definable capture on what the manufacturing use in the B3 is. The draft that came out of Planning Commission is to cap a manufacturing area at 25,000 square feet and still require a retail component to the business. The Planning Commission ultimately did vote to send this forward to city council for, for approval, but did suggest to staff and city council that Planning Commission would like to continue to develop this idea and would potentially bring back another amendment or a change at some point in the future when they've had the chance to discuss that one.
And if I could add, as a member of the Planning Commission, this was, our bigger concern was in making sure that some elements were removed from B3. This came up later in the conversation, and it was made very clear that we were not comfortable with the 25,000 square feet. There was a motion to bring it forward, but in talking with different members of the Planning Commission and with council as well during our work session, I would ask that we sever this part of the resolution to not be included for passage, given the fact that we already know that we have manufacturing entities that are very close to 25,000 capacity and certainly plan to extend even beyond that. We will, I believe, I'll speak for myself, I believe that this sends a wrongful message as is, and that with so many different projects coming to light, that we do not want to send a wrongful message, thus the request to sever this from the resolution.
That needs to probably come under after we...
Right. I just, while we were there, I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget.
All right. Does any other member of council have questions for staff regarding this ordinance? All right. Is there a motion to take action? Are you ready?
Well, I was just going to say, that was definitely the, the most substantial piece of this to discuss, but the only other additions is that we would move those car washes, cardboard box manufacturing, and then self-storage unit facilities to the M1 zone, self-storage unit facilities is added to the M2 zone. And then, as we discussed in the work session, we revise those introductory purpose statements of the industrial zones to just be, have more concise language.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? All right, now, here a motion to take action on this ordinance. Is there a motion?
So, do you want to motion with, please, let's move to bring the, bring the ordinance, if you move to approve, then it's appropriate to discuss, and then once you've got a motion and a second, you can move to amend the ordinance.
I'll move to approve ordinance 23-8, amending zoning ordinance to change the uses permitted by right in the B3 and M1 and M2 zones, and make other changes clarifying the purpose of such zones.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Now, we can discuss it and make, make any sort of amendments that you'd like to.
Sherri, if you could go back to the screen that has that part to sever. I would like to make an amendment that we sever at the time from this resolution the section to amend manufacturing use due to the fact that it states that it's not to exceed 25,000 feet, and that seems to be a point that needs greater conversation. And so, I would make the amendment to sever that part and to send that part only back to the Planning Commission.
For clarity, Councilmember Powers, section E of the ordinance itself, which is in your packet.
Right.
Contains that language. Section E reads in chapter four, business district, section 405, B3 district, general business zone, by amending subsection V to read as follows, 31, 32, 33, 42, 45, manufacture of articles to be sold at retail on premises with the manufacturing area not to exceed 25,000 square feet.
Then my motion, my amendment is to sever section E of ordinance 23-8. Did I get it right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll second that amendment. Is that correct?
Okay, now, we have to vote on the amendment itself?
Yes, sir.
We need a, do we need a second for that?
We have a second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Fire Robin.
So, we're voting on it? We're voting on this, on Councilwoman Powers' amendment? Mary Lee, will you take the roll?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes, and thank you.
So, that motion carries. Great. So, now, we have to go back. We have, we don't need to go back, do we? We're good to move on?
Yes, sir. You do need to vote on the overall motion, which is to approve the ordinance as amended.
Right. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this matter so we can move to the vote on the amendment itself? I mean, on the ordinance itself. Is that correct? All right. Mary Lee, will you take the roll?
Luttrell?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes, and thank you.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this ordinance? Thank you.
Also, if anybody wants a little lesson in Robert's rules, we, maybe it wasn't real neat, but it's there. Be sure that we get it right.
All right, so, we've, I think I just switched those two things in the order there. So, we're ready to move on to ordinance twenty-three nine. The next item, ordinance of twenty-three nine, it's to amend chapter eighty-two, the Code of Ordinances relating to the regulation of taxicabs. Ms. Smith, will you please summarize this ordinance for the council?
Yes, Vice Mayor Hutton. If it's okay with council, I'll stay back here at this seat. I can come up there, but if I can read, it's easier for me to read back here. We discussed this amendment to the taxicab ordinance at the work session. As council's aware, the taxicab ordinance hasn't been amended in decades, and so it is a little bit outdated. And we were approached by a citizen who asked us to consider making some amendments to it so that she could take advantage of a new ordinance and open a taxicab business. In working with the police, we came up with some amendments to the ordinance. The red-line version is busier than it really looks like, but we did clean up quite a bit of the ordinance. The primary things that we attempted to fix in our amendment would be removing the requirement of a taximeter, which is an outdated device used to measure the fares. We would allow someone to use a taximeter if they want to, but also to use any other electronic or mechanical device that can accurately measure the distance that traveled and the time that the cab is in service. We would make explicit the requirement that a driver have a valid state driver's license in order to get a taxicab driver's permit from the city. We would require a background check to be submitted with the application for a driver's permit. We would conform the definition of taxicab to Tennessee law, which would make clear that the taxicab ordinance doesn't regulate services like Uber and Lyft. It's really more bringing those taxicabs into the same, it's making them sort of more equal to Uber and Lyft, because they'd be going through the same processes that an Uber or Lyft driver goes through in getting employment or getting their contract with the company. We'd provide a complaint process so that customers would be able to file complaints with the police and have those investigated. The chief of police would be permitted to suspend or revoke a permit after an investigation, and we'd provide a process for a hearing or an appeal to be made to the city manager in the event of that suspension or revocation. The document that is in your packets is the same as what was presented to you at the work session with one exception, and that is, after council's discussion at the work session, the original version that was presented at work session said that council would set the rates for the taxicabs, and council felt like they would be more comfortable with having the power to set the rates, but not being required to do so, so that taxicab drivers could set their own rates, and if council felt it was necessary to step in, they'd have that power, but they wouldn't necessarily have to. The way that the language reads now, basically, the taxicab owners would be permitted to set their own rates, but those rates would have to be on display for the taxicab passengers to see before they actually start their ride. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the ordinance that council has.
Does any member of council have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-three nine to amend chapter eighty-two, vehicles for hire, as it relates to regulation of taxicabs.
Fantastic, is there a second?
I'll second.
Fantastic. Any member of council like to discuss ordinance twenty-three nine?
It may seem odd that we didn't want to take the power and set the rates, but we believe that the market will dictate the rates, and that if we have taxicab drivers that are charging a fair rate, they'll be actively used, and if they're not, they'll be rejected.
Any other member of council? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this ordinance? Please go to the, provide us your name and address again. Thank you.
My name is Kieran Hernandez. Again, I'm from fourteen eighteen New Hampshire Avenue, Bristol, Virginia. I was just calling, standing up here to clarify, so with this ordinance and bill, there will be Lyft and Uber accessible in the community now? Would that, would that be correct?
Uber and Lyft are already accessible to the community. We don't regulate Uber and Lyft.
Okay, to my understanding, for some reason, because there's like a very scarce amount of drivers on the road as is, and coming from a bigger city, taking the taxi tends to be a bit more expensive. If they're charging you seventy-five cents a mile or something like that, you know, it can be a bit expensive, and whereas Uber and Lyft, if there was a way to like push more people to drive for Bristol or what have you, it would maybe benefit more of the community versus just a business alone, you know, and that way it gets more people encouraged to get out there, you know, like, hey, this is, this could be beneficial for everybody, you know, instead of having ten drivers on the road working for a business, you have twenty drivers working for the community and for themselves and what have you. That's just my experience with taxis. I ride Uber and Lyft a lot if I'm out of town. It's kind of like an easy way for me to get around, and anytime I ridden the taxi, it was like, I wish I did not, you know? So, I was just, I guess I had not known that Uber and Lyft were already in the community, so that is my apologies. I just wanted a little bit of clarification on that. But, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we're now ready to take a vote. Mary Lee, will you please take the roll?
Letcher?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers? Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you all. There are no ordinances for adoption this evening, so we're moving on to our resolutions. First resolution is resolution twenty-three forty-seven, confirming the appointment of a student member to the Parks and Recations Commission. Mr. Napier, would you please review this request for us?
Yes, sir, thank you. As some of you recall, I've been on council, in October of twenty eighteen, council approved an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, which placed two student representatives on the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, and it was set up so we would have an active junior and an active senior on the board at all times, so we always had that student input. Tonight's request was sent to Dr. Kim Kirk at Tennessee High School for a recommendation, and she did recommend Mr. Eli Quarter for the position of the rising junior. I spoke with Eli today. Eli is very excited, can't wait to attend the meeting in July and learn about the Parks and Rec Commission and all the great things going on in our community. So, with that, I would ask that you appoint Mr. Quarter to the commission based on Dr. Kirk's recommendation. Thank you.
Any member of council have questions? All right, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve the appointee as stated.
I'll second it.
Any member of council like to discuss resolution twenty-three forty-seven?
It's great to have our student members, and I think important to have that representation on our Parks and Rec.
Seeing no other comments, I believe we're ready to take the vote. Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Letcher?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers? Yes.
Thank you. Ready now to move to our consent agenda. Ms. Bourgeois, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Item A is minutes of the May second city council meeting. Item B is minutes of the May sixteenth city council called work session. Item C is minutes of the May thirtieth city council work session. Item D is approval of resolution twenty-three dash forty-eight, authorizing payment to Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders for legal fees. Item E is approval of resolution twenty-three dash forty-nine, authorizing the purchase of a new pickup truck under state contract for the engineering department. Item F is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty, approving the agreement with First Tennessee Development District for Program Administration for the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium. Item G is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-one, authorizing the temporary use of public property and public rights-of-way for sale, distribution, and consumption of beer. For Believe in Bristol, that's for Anderson Park. Item H is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-two, authorizing the acceptance of the Violent Crime Intervention Fund grant award. Item I is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three, authorizing entry into a software license and software agreement for police records management system. Item J is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-four, authorizing entry into the agreement with Doxim Inc. for utility and property tax bill and notice printing services. Item K is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-five, awarding a bid for sidewalk replacement. Item L is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-six, approving grant application and associated contract documents with the Federal Transit Administration. That's for operating assistance. Item M is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven, approving an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for maintenance of state highways. That's a two-year contract. Item N is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight, indicating the intent of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, to issue its bonds or other obligations of indebtedness relating to public projects of the city with proceeds of the bonds to be issued by the city. And again, that's the resolution we discussed previously. And item O is approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine, approving a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for our water infrastructure projects.
Thank you. Does any member of council like to have any item removed from the consent agenda? Good. So, do I have a motion to approve items including the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Take your pick.
Mary Lee, will you please call the roll?
Letcher?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers? Yes.
Fantastic. All right, time now for our city manager's report. Ms. Bourgeois, would you please?
Thank you. Just a few pieces here. I had the opportunity to attend our summer concert series last Thursday, and our border bash, first border bash concert last Friday, and our farmers market last Saturday, so it's amazing, and I'm very excited to see all of the people that came out for all of those. Again, thank you to staff and council for all of their work on the budget, you know, that was a huge undertaking. And then, just upcoming meetings, we've got our, the hearing, the public meeting that was established by the judge for our landfill case, that is next Wednesday, Tuesday, I'm sorry, next Tuesday, June thirteenth, at ten AM at the federal courthouse in Abingdon. There's more information on our website for that. That evening, at five o'clock, June thirteenth, we have our second reading of our budget, and that is here, Slater Center. And then, our next council work session is June twenty-seventh at five PM in our annex. And that's all I have.
Fantastic. It's time now for city council comments. Any member of city council have some comments?
Of course we do. I think it's real important to note at this juncture that we have a change of circumstances. You know, you go along for a while, and things are all somewhat predictable, and you understand where you are, and for us, we're still in a great place, but we are experiencing a change of circumstances. We have projects that we've wanted to do for quite some time, the baseball at White Top Creek Park. There will be an extreme amount of vetting that goes into that project. We understand that there are some engineering issues that will need to be resolved. It is my hope that in going forward with this project, that we will have an absolutely exceptional facility where we don't have the water issues that we have had, and that it will truly be reflective of the quality of life. You know, we talk about quality of life projects. Well, there are those, there are those projects that are okay or just good enough. We expect this project to absolutely be above and beyond. Secondly, we are excited about the pickleball. We understand, Terry, there to be some renderings coming pretty soon, so we're excited about that. We see that as a change of our circumstances. The skate park, you know, we've talked about different locations for the skate park. There will have to be an extensive vetting, engineering perspective. George, as I'm sure you're aware, there is some water down there, and we want to be sure that that is all taken care of, so that we have an exceptional project wherever it's located. A change of circumstances, we can either choose to be frustrated by a change of circumstances, or we can choose to embrace a change of circumstances and move forward even stronger than before. I'm going to choose to embrace our change of circumstances. I think that it's important for we, as your council representatives, to be held accountable, and it's important for us to hold our staff accountable as well. And so, if we're all holding each other accountable to put our best foot forward, we should achieve those things that we most value in regard to our city, whether it's public safety, whether it's public service, whether it's quality of life through parks and recreation. I think we have a great opportunity in front of us. I am very delighted and excited to work with our city manager, Bourgeois, and I think that she has done a great job in getting us to this point. So, I hope that you'll all look at the future with me, with this change of circumstance in regard, I have one, a couple of other things. In regard to the baseball or to Parks and Rec, I really hope that we will put together a task force to take a look, to encourage the community to be a part of where, how we go forward with youth programming. I understand that Bristol baseball holds the rights to baseball, and that we have several different regional travel entities, the Patriots, the Crusaders, and others. But I think it would be great if we could bring some of these folks together to talk about baseball in Bristol, not along with the state liners and Tennessee High, so that we can all come together and be advocates for a great opportunity. The same thing is true with other different sports and activities, as well as the skate park. So, I hope you'll join with me in embracing where we are and moving forward together positively. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So, I usually have several things for dates, et cetera, and I'll start with, I also went to the farmers market this Saturday, and I'd missed the first couple, so very glad to get there, and the farmers are, and vendors are enthusiastic, and glad to be there, and I believe we are doing the doubling of the SNAP benefits that has started, so anybody who's hearing this, I encourage y'all to go out and take advantage of that as well. So, we are pleased, we hope, at some point, to have a nice covered area for our farmers to have a little bit pleasanter situation when the weather's bad. Right now, when it's sunny, it was great on Saturday. Also, just note, and with city manager Bourgeois mentioned, we have lots of music. Somebody this morning at Believe in Bristol meeting said that there was somebody in the middle of the street talking to somebody from way out of the area and pointing to fourteen or fifteen different venues for music that was happening right at that moment. We, a lot of our music is free. It is at the downtown center, and even, I think, the ones that cost are going to be a couple dollars. Is that right? Two dollars? I'm getting the sign back there. So, lots of different music opportunities, so that's very exciting to have, and it fits our character of birthplace country music. Juneteenth is celebrated here in Bristol. It started a couple of years ago. Saturday, June seventeenth, at Cumberland Park from two to six, and Bristol Area Ministerial Association has been the ones to put that together and plan it, so hope some of y'all can turn out and check that out. The twenty-four, June twenty-fourth, Symphony of the Mountains is going to be at Cumberland Park at eight PM, so that's also exciting. What used to be King's Sports Symphony transitioned to Symphony of the Mountains, which sounds like sunsets and gorgeous weather and wonderful music. So, hope folks can get out to Cumberland Park to enjoy the music for that. And July fourth, because I don't think we meet again until after July, parade that's going to be a little bit shorter in how far the parade people have to go, and it's usually hot, so people looking forward to that, and that's downtown. And then, the celebration this year is going to be in Anderson Park. So, it's been in Cumberland, and the thought now is to try to rotate back and forth, so we'll start this year with Anderson Park. So, and we know that heavily treed, lots of nice shade, et cetera, so look forward to lots of different activities for Fourth of July. So, that's my list of things, and- So, that's my list of things, and can also just say again that, yeah, we have some difficult conversations, and did I miss, did you talk about rate study yet? Or, I did not? Not. So, yeah, we're- Do you want to talk about it real quickly, just so we don't miss that? And next time-
And to piggyback onto that, would you like to announce our tax rate?
Yes, thank you. I should have done that. So, the proposal is for the tax rate to stay the same, no increase for this coming year. And with that, though, our utilities, so water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and solid waste, we do need to look at those rates. So, we have an RFP out right now, looking for a consultant to conduct a rate study for us, and they will then analyze all of our information and make recommendations for rates moving forward, so that will be coming.
Thank you. And water and sewer and storm water are enterprise funds? Is that correct? Or water and sewer are?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. And, but solid waste does not fit in that category. So, that means they have to pay for themselves, and so when those funds get low enough, we absolutely have to look at how do we get it to pay for itself again? And that's paying for all the pipes and the upgrades and everything, and all the workers and everything that goes into that. So, periodically, there are rate studies, and it's time for us to do that one again. So, what?
And the trucks.
And the trucks. The trucks are a huge cost, so. So, we'll look forward to that. That does not have to wait till next June to go into our budget. That's a separate item, but it will take several months to complete the study, so we're looking probably, before we have a chance, to look at what's recommended. It'll be January, February. So, and I am excited about the opportunities we have with different capital projects, not- a lot of our capital projects are trucks and police cars and fire department, which I know they get really excited. We get really excited when they come and rescue us, but we also like the other items, like pickleball courts and skateboard parks and other things along those lines, too. So, but we'll, we'll get real serious about what it takes to get those things and maintain our quality of life. So, stay tuned. People are welcome to come to any of our work sessions. Our meetings are open to the public, required by Tennessee law, so if you want to find out what's going on, do come and plan, maybe pack a lunch or a supper, because sometimes we stay a long time. Anyway, but you're welcome to come for any length of time. Stay with us the whole time, or see a bit of what we talk about and then move on. So, anyway, I think I talked enough.
Cut you off. Now, a moment ago, you know, it was mentioned that Bristol had been on the move, and we're definitely on the move again, and we really have never stopped. But just some great projects, as everyone's alluded to, that's coming in the mic, and I think we are going to be very proud of them. I want to recognize Mayor Staten and his better half, Heck, for being here tonight with us, and also Matthew Slagle, our representative of Sullivan County Commission. I was here with us tonight as well. Last week, I attended the war memorial service downtown, and if you look around at those services, you know, you're seeing a lot of, a lot of folks that are up in, up in age, and if you've been to a lot of them, like I've gone to quite a few over my lifetime, you know, you see some of the same people that used to be there, not around anymore. But what you're not seeing is the younger generation coming in and showing their gratitude and support. So, hopefully, you know, as we get into 4th of July, as we get into Veterans Day, that we can kind of renew and, you know, get that, get that going again, get that pride going again, and go out and support our veterans. I think it's very important. Something else I was going to say, I forgot, Margish.
I talked too much.
With that, I'm going to quit right here as well, but I want to thank everyone for being here, and thank all the staff for all the hard work they do.
Is anybody else on the council, all right, that have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.